Good evening. Please stand for the plaid allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to item number three, approve the agenda. You have time to take a look at it.
We're going to change it, correct? Or is that the second one? Oh, this one right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think we're here on that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion has passed. We'll move on to number four. Approved minutes of April 3rd, April 17th, 2023 council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of April 3rd, April 17th, 2023 council meeting.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. We'll move on to number five, warrants. So 5A would be a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. We'll move on to number six, warrant three resignation. 6A, motion to accept warrant three resignation from Lucas Dreeson.
I have a copy of the letter dated May 1st, 2023. Dear City Council, I, Lucas Dreeson, will be stepping down from the Ward Three City Council President. I look forward to serving as a future city mayor and will try my best. Thanks, Lucas Dreeson. So I will make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Number seven would be on you, Darla.
Okay, so this part of our meeting, since there's so many other sitting, we need a motion to adjourn City Council.
I'll second it.
Oh, you got it. I gotta make it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting as the old council.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we are going to call the meeting back to order, or we gotta hand the other one?
At 6:03.
6:03. The first meeting ended. And now at 6:04, we're opening the new meeting. So at this time, Kyle is going to be late this evening. He's at work. But we will have the oath of office for Lucas as the new mayor.
Stand and adjutant. I, Sam.
I, Lucas Dreeson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
The State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
In and for.
In and for.
The City of Alcesther.
The City of Alcesther.
For a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
From the City of Alcesther.
From the City of Alcesther.
Union County.
Union County.
South Dakota.
South Dakota.
To which office I have been duly elected.
So, we can still make a motion?
No, not. If Kyle does come, then we can go back to that.
Okay. So at this time, we'll move on to number three, aldermen interviews if needed. Is there anybody here for an alderman interview? Kendra?
Yeah.
And me. Carrie? Anyone else? Okay, so at this time, we'll have to have a motion to enter into executive session. And then we'll do single interviews.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to S100 CL 1-25-2 (1). Alderman interview.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We are in executive session at 6:06 PM.
So I see you moved to town. Where did you live?
Where do I live now? The same place?
No, where did you live?
Oh, I'm Tuck Avenue.
Doty's, Mark Doty's?
No.
No?
She was a music teacher.
Oh. Carla, that's her.
Okay.
Yeah, I know where that's at.
Well. Nice to couple years ago.
Okay.
We are out of executive session at 6:44 PM. We'll move on to 3B, motion to appoint whoever you would like to appoint.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kendra Hatley, Ward Three Alderperson, until next election.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. Well, we got another motion to appoint.
I'll make a motion to appoint Carrie Haddon from Ward Two as an alderman until the next election.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed.
More people. We're filling up.
We'll do 3C, oath of office.
One or both?
One. One and two.
Raise your right hand. I, Kendra Hatley, do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of South Dakota. Of the State of South Dakota. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of alderman. Of alderman. In and for. In and for. Ward Three. Ward Three. For the City of Alcesther. For the City of Alcesther. Union County. Union County. South Dakota. South Dakota. To which office. To which office. I have been duly elected. I have been duly elected. You can take your position now.
Okay.
Carrie?
Yep.
Step up, please.
I, Sam.
Hi, Carrie Haddon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
Duties of alderman.
In and for.
In and for.
Ward Two.
Ward Two.
For the City of Alcesther.
City of Alcesther.
Union County.
Union County.
South Dakota.
South Dakota.
To which office.
To which office.
I have been duly elected.
I have been duly elected.
Thank you, Kendra. Thank you, Carrie. Since Kyle was back, we're gonna have to back up to 2B and 2C. 2B is motion to approve appointment of Kyle Bandonhall, Ward Two, until next election.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kyle Bandonhall for Ward Two until the next election.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. So we'll move on to 2C, oath of office, Kyle.
Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Kyle Bandonhall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of South Dakota.
The State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of alderman.
The duties of alderman.
In and for.
In and for.
Ward Two.
Ward Two.
For the City of Alcesther.
For the City of Alcesther.
Union County.
Union County.
South Dakota.
South Dakota.
To which office.
To which office.
I have been duly elected.
I have been duly elected.
Thank you, Kendra. We'll move on back down to number four, elect council president, vice president. So of course, beforehand, I was the president, Darla was vice president. So we'll have to, one of you will have to nominate each other or decide who would like to be with president vice.
I would like, I would like to make a motion to elect Darla as council president.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four. Opposed? Motion has passed. Now we need a motion to elect vice president.
I would make a motion to elect Cindy Peoples as the vice president.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. We'll move on to number five, public input. Anybody have public input? Go ahead.
Hello, good evening. I'm Paula Fagree, and I live at 502 Iowa Street. I was not born in Alcesther, but my roots here are very deep. My grandfather and grandmother and great-grandparents lived on a farm three miles south, where my mother was born and raised, along with her six younger Hagan siblings, one of which still owns the same acreage today and is sitting in the room this evening. I've been here now since 2015, but after moving 43 times in my life, one of those pit stops occurred in between Long Beach, California and Pipestone, Minnesota. We landed right here in Alcesther for nine months. And I went to school in fifth grade at the building next door to us with Mrs. Clemmensen as my teacher. It's pretty funny now how I begin to kind of melt into the fabric of this little town after all these years. And from the sink of my recently remodeled kitchen, I was delighted to see that I can look out all my windows and see every single direction, in four directions. So I can tell when a newcomer visits Alcesther because they almost always drive the only one-way street in town in the wrong direction. I can hear when Mr. Fisher is about ready to clean up things at 4:30 AM on Tuesday mornings with his trash truck. And I see Patty pull up to this very parking lot outside at 0:30 to begin her long day. I can watch Pastor Scott march up the street to the Baptist church from his home a full block away to prepare sermons for the two services held on Sunday. And I hear the dozens of kids screams and laughter as they search for each other every Wednesday night in their games of hide-and-seek outside that same building. I know when Bobby Anderson is head for lunch at the grill or our room as he scrapes the bottom of his back bumper on the street every single time. I know what month it is because of the Holiday House one block from us that has brought every decoration sold by Hobby Lobby. I see Michael on the west side planting his massive garden with extreme care. And I know when it is swimming pool time as Shelby Bratton marches up Fifth Avenue with 15 children in strollers and hanging onto a long train of rope. I'm aware of who is visited by UPS and FedEx. And I know when it is midnight at my cousin Lonnie Johnson's home by the smoking grill on his front porch. I have a little asterisk here because about two hours prior to this meeting, I happened to be standing at my little sink and I had to put on my little, I'm not sure what it is, neighbor watch hat or whatever as three junior high boys, one with a baseball bat, was playing over on the side of the school and messing with my brother's purple Honda, which has become a permanent fixture over there for some reason, which I don't get. But anyway, they were messing with the car and they were taking the bat and they were swinging, you know, with the things and going, "Hmm, I might get the window." So, you know, I know there is, when you see something, say something. But I think when you see something, do something. So I walked out there. Can I help you, boys? "No, we're fine," you know. I don't know what they were gonna do. I have no idea. But I think we have to watch. And that's what I do. So anyway, there are things to be seen every single day. Some of it we love, other things not so much. And the only way we can deal with any of it is to first be aware. I have written my words down this evening, and I do plan to read from that, if that's okay, because I have the ability to speak off the top of my head and from my heart. But we don't want to be here all night. And I just wanted to get to the point. In our retirement, my husband and I have become students of this world. And let me add that he does get nervous anytime I say "we" when I open my mouth. But it is true, we never expected in our last half of life to go back to school once again. And yet that is exactly what we did, not out of choice, but out of necessity. While growing up, we were blindly living our lives and doing what we were told. Then a series of things occurred that required us to come out of our deep sleep and truly see what was happening to the people of our country and our entire world. It was not good. Everything was turning upside down and inside out. We had found ourselves in the middle of a real war, and I think it's good versus evil. And even though I could go on for hours about that topic, I will not, mostly because I need to be in bed by 7:30. The real reason I'm here this evening is because I feel that while we are struggling to correct what is happening at the national and international level these days, it is equally, if not more important, to pay attention to what is happening in our towns and in our own backyards. I watched our governor speak the other night at the NRA conferences. It was very enlightening. She shared with the crowd what South Dakota state motto is. Does anybody know what the motto is for the State of South Dakota? I didn't know it either. It's "Under God, the people rule." And that is also what our constitution says. And I am hoping that we can begin to live what those forefathers wrote very soon. What the South Dakota motto says is that every single individual that is sitting in a seat of leadership should be doing the work of the people, not for themselves, but for the citizens that they serve. It is absolutely all right for our leaders to be thoughtful, hardworking, bold, and to take the reins with authority. But every leader must also remember that this power is to only be used to serve the people that either place them there or allow them to be there. It is never meant to rule over their fellow citizens. Whether you are a teacher, a coach, a principal, a police officer, a judge, a finance director, a business owner, a bank president, a lifeguard, a bus driver, a pastor, a doctor, a city council member, or a mayor, the real job is the very same, not to rule, but to serve. It is my hope and my prayer, as we move forward with this year and all the years to come, that more real leaders remember what our true motto is. Thank you.
Any other public input? Carrie?
Suffice it to say, I live here 65 years. Alcesther will always be my home. The end of last year, when I heard of the budget shortfall, I was concerned, as everyone was. And I was able to reach out to Lucas and talk. I talked to Darla. And during the following months, it became pretty clear to me how much time they were spending trying to get things resolved and to ensure that that kind of problem would never, never happen again. And I was really amazed at how many hours they were putting in. It's like, coming to council meetings is one thing, but it became very obvious that they were taking a lot of time away from their job, their family, R and R. And it's like, why? You know, why are you devoting this much time to this issue or other issues of the town? And the only conclusion I could come to was that they wanted to make Alcesther a good place to live or keep it a good place to live, or maybe even make it better. But one thing is certain, they aren't sitting on the council. And I'm sure glad we got everyone appointed before this, my remarks. Hope nobody resigns after this. But, you know, they didn't offer their services to the city on the council to what must seem like unending criticism and complaints. I mean, I know we're all guilty of it, but it's gotta be, it's gotta get old. You know, they're not perfect. I don't think anyone in this room is probably perfect. But I do think they're trying to make Alcesther stay a good community. And they're not doing it to hear people call them names, you know, horrible, offensive names. Certainly not, not all the council people have had to, you know, endure that. Some mayors have. So good luck, Lucas. But I think there's a reason that we've had a problem filling the council seats. It's because our actions, you know, matter. And, you know, how do you, why would anyone want to be on the council when you gotta have name-calling and constant criticism? The community needs to support our council. They're, they're working for us, trying to serve us, but it's a two-way street. They're trying to work for us, but we need to support them. So I would just beg the community, we can do better to support our council. We've got some new members now that'll help spread the load out, hopefully. And hopefully, Alcesther can move forward in a positive manner. So thank you, council people.
Thank you.
Any other public input? If not, we'll move on to number six.
I have something, yes. Becky Larson. In light of things, I chose to live in Alcesther. I wasn't born here. I chose to be here and moved my business here many years ago. My husband was mayor and councilperson. And I was on the receiving end of a couple postcards that, or not postcards, cards, sent through the US Mail that invited that they wish I was six feet under the ground. So, that didn't bother me. I saved those for pop therapy. But my thing is, tonight, I wanted to bring it to the council's attention and to our police chief. We've got some road racers going on. And living where I do, I see, I witnessed, and I called it, I called it in on 911. We had two cars come out from between the football field and the baseball field. They came out side by side, westbound on Sixth Street, hell-bent for election at 8:50 at night. And any of you that have traveled that street, that hill is there. You can't see it's coming. And they couldn't see anybody there. But I called it in, gave my name, and that. We do have some golf carts that are roaming town. Some of them, some of the kids operating those, they can't reach the pedals. That's a danger for that and everything. One thing I wanted to go back and touch, I brought it up in another meeting, as far as having a, oh geez, I just lost the word, cameras on looping for people to watch. That's not the term, but do we, have we bought cameras?
For the community center.
I'm sorry, what?
For the community center.
Oh, for the community center?
Yeah.
Do we have any here? Are there any cameras in this room?
I do have a camera, but it's for after-hours.
Okay, but where's it at?
It's over on the filing cabinet.
Oh, okay. So, but it's gotta, it could be on. And I asked a question once before on an echo. Some of us call it, hmm, that's my grandmother. Alexa. And Mr. Hayter made a big production of hollering at Alexa. The thing is about that particular device, you can change the wake-up name. So instead of Alexa, you could put dummy or whatever. You use that word and it turns, it turns the thing on. It records everything that happens in this room or any other room, and it sends it to a cloud. So any executive sessions or whatever could be on Alexa, and she could be sharing with the cloud. So just so you guys are aware of that, and streaming, there's the word I was looking for. But anyhow, and the other thing is, I'm noticing the artwork and stuff. Does the city have the person that displays this? Is there a, a sharing of profit if something gets sold in here? Okay, is there a waiver that is signed by the person putting the artwork up that if anything bad would happen to the artwork, that it's not the city's liability? That they're hanging these up at their own liability? Oh, we probably should have a waiver that the artist signs, giving, not holding the city harmless if anything untoward should happen? Okay? I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Becky. We'll move on to number six. Well, any other public input?
Yeah, I have one. Talking to someone people this afternoon, or this last weekend, we're kind Talking to someone, people this afternoon, or this last weekend, we're kind of wondering how the clubhouse is going, like if there's a possibility for, to put up numbers in this office or something, so that people are walking in and out, they can see, oh, the clubhouse is having good weeks, bad weeks, good ones, bad ones type of thing, or do specials or things going on. And then also wondering what's the, what's next for developing lots now the back drive is almost full? Wondering what we have for plans on doing next? That's what I got.
I do have one thing.
Go ahead, Linda.
I think with the cameras here, we talked about that years ago, and they should be on all the time. Remember when Wanda was verbally abused?
Yes.
And that was during office hours? And that was so we could see that interaction? So I think they should be on during the daytime, too, just to protect the people in the office.
The only thing is, is that the city's camera, whose camera is it?
It is the city's.
Yeah, 'cause I thought we had said we bought them, but we just didn't get them installed.
I know we had talked about it, but I was never aware that we purchased one. I don't know about any of the other aldermen, but I did not know we bought this, this city all.
Because we were gonna put three up, wasn't that the time, the time? Put three up, and then they'd be on all the time.
Mr. Phelps, is there some sort of a disclaimer that should be posted, that this facility is camera? That some, something posted so that people walking into this room know that they're on camera?
There should be a sign that people hold their other body.
Okay, thank you.
You haven't answered, why would you do that to me?
Unless it's implied, but just out of, out of abundance of caution, I would recommend at least having something that, whether it's on the door outside or as they're walking in, just having a sticker saying that they're monitoring equipment in place.
Yeah, if they have like some, so it's like these premises are...
Maybe a term or something to that effect.
Usually a camera company puts it on, like at the clubhouse.
As long as there's some notice, that's...
Well, I think we should pursue, pursue it to have someone here, and we can even talk to the people who are down there in the clubhouse.
Are these still being...
Yes, we are. I signed the warrant today to put in them in the clubhouse. So, there will be cameras there, so. But where does that go? So, where does the heat from those go?
You go to DVR, and then also the alderman or whoever could sign in on their phone and watch the cameras live. Any other public input? We'll move on to number six, legal updates.
I'm not thinking we're looking for legal updates unless somebody has something to discuss, just a motion to approve for me.
So we'll need a motion to approve a second reading of the ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance changing the existing municipal ordinance of the City of Elsister, South Dakota, Title I, Chapter 1.02, Section 1.0202, regular meetings.
I'll make... Go ahead, Sam. Make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2023-05, an ordinance changing the existing municipal ordinance is that the City of Elsister, South Dakota, Title 1, Chapter 1.02, Section 1.0202, regular meetings.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Is your name spelled with a C or a K?
K.
That's not gonna be an issue, I'll just say that, that's gonna be a script errors error, not gonna have any effect on the ordinance.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. We'll move on to number seven, 505 Offsted, 204 Offsted Parcels. This discussion is going to be on the two lots that are vacant. The HRC would like to buy them, but Jared had talked to us about some of the cost. They would like the city to get the utilities up to the house. So, they had approved, they presented $15,000 for 505 and $10,000 for 204 Offsted. So, I guess the worst-case scenario, you kind of see the handout, you know. On 505, we don't really know where the sewer is capped off at when they took down the house. That being said, once the sewer line would be located, it would probably be a wise idea to put a camera in the line to kind of see what's the condition of the existing line would be before we hook up with, with a new one to the, to the new governor's home. And if we would have to put a new sewer line in, the sewer, the existing sewer line to the main is fairly deep. I can't say how many feet deep it is, I don't know, but there's going to be a drop pipe, so it's gonna go out, it's gonna drop down and get, go to the sewer. Majority of the time, that drop pipe is in really good condition because nothing sits in it. But on the other hand, worst-case scenario, if we would have to run a new sewer line, you could spend up to $10,000. This is a quote from Dan Waterman. If it looks good, it's just from the existing where they capped it to the house. Now, they're, you know, why they're presenting the city to do the utilities is because other cities are doing this, to just get housing in town. So, electric, water, that's not a real big deal. It's, you know, the costly, you know, electric, you're looking at 900, you know, on 505, 1500 on 204. You know, water on 505 is 600, water on 204 could be 2600. So, I mean, there is kind of a range there. 505, camera each line on both, both of them could be around $1,000. Sewer on 505 could be up to $10,000, 204 could be $5,000. So, the worst-case scenario, we could be looking at $12,500 on 505 with a $10,000, $10,100 total on 204. I guess, you know, you take, you take that off of the $15,000 and the $10,000 offers, we're gonna lose and make, you know, on one and make, lose on one and make on the other. That being said, realistically, if we don't sell them to the HRC, you know, we're gonna have to do something with them. So, these are the options we're looking at.
Neither looking at worst-case scenarios for the sewer line.
Correct, yeah. But, you know, we could say, well, we'll sell 505 for $10,000, and if you decide to put a cap on it, say, well, we'll do $5,000 for, you know, utilities, and this is what we're here to offer. Or we could say, well, we just wanna sell it for X amount of dollars, cut clean, dry, here you go, you're out. So there is some options, but the way I see it is, if we want somebody that wants to move houses to town, we need the housing.
They wanna order both.
Governor's houses.
Governor's houses, but they're three years out, so they gotta get it in.
So, I talked with Jared over the weekend, and he discussed those same three options there. And the way I look at it is, we, like 505, we had that house, we knocked it down, because otherwise, the only option in a small town is that house is gonna sit there abandoned, unless one of the neighbors wants to go through the work of knocking it down and extending their lot, or else the city does something. We did something, we got rid of it to clean up, so that we could put in a new house there. If we lose a little money on it, then so be it, I think, 'cause that's the cost of cleaning up an old house, and someone's gotta do it, and there's no reason to wait around for someone else to do it. So I think we go with the offers they have. We bring in utilities, 'cause that is what other towns around are doing, and it just makes sense if we're trying to help bring in more people and bring in nice new houses and stuff, we gotta put in a little work on it.
So would you like to put a cap on the utilities, or are you willing to pay worst-case scenario 12, 5 and 10, 1?
15 and the 10, and, you know, we cover the utilities.
What if something worse happens than worst-case scenario? What if something is more expensive? Material is more expensive?
It shouldn't be, 'cause I did get these quotes from Dan Waterman, and he does all our sewer work in town. So he's familiar with what our older sewer lines look like.
But aren't we talking three years old?
Yeah.
That could change a lot. Would it?
I'm assuming we would do our work right away.
It would also be in the water system enough to sell it.
Water is... You know, the electric would probably happen once the house is ready for delivery or getting closer to delivery, but I think we would probably do the water and sewer work right away.
I think I would just say we'd honor it, be at this bid up until the day the house is here, you know? And then that just kind of gives us the cushion to say, well, this is what we're willing to pay, that's how I, I would see it.
Well, I guess I'd like to see, I'd like the idea of more homes being built, and that does add to our tax base, so.
Yeah.
Concerned with the amount of money that's spent on a lot of other things, this is probably a good deal. Do we have the money to be able to swing it? That'd be my only concern.
I believe we would use the funds for the sale of the property.
And what would, what were they offering? I forgot.
$15,000 for 505 and $10,000 for 204.
So could we say up to $15,000, up to $10,000, and then that gives us a little...
Up to 12, 5 and up to 10,000.
12, 5, yeah. Then that, if it had to come back, then we'd have at least a little...
You know, a quarter, what, around $3,000 left over, you ever take, you know, north and south of it? Could be more, could be less, you know, it's just the same thing.
If we camera the lines, we're gonna have a really good idea of what's going on. The bad part about both of these homes is they've not had sewer going through those lines for quite some time. So, that's the part we don't know.
I feel like in his presentation, he brought up all the points, he had a really solid foundation of information he was bringing in. He had everything, and he graded down to the point. So I don't really think there's anything else he's gonna bring up or try and swing. It just is what it is.
I agree. Well, any other discussion? If not, I guess we, if you'd like to move forward, we'd need a motion to approve the sale of 505 Offsted Street Parcel to the HRC for the amount of $15,000, with the city providing X amount of dollars, which would be $12,500 worth of utilities, utility services.
Could we do the first one first and camera the line? That'll give us a really good idea, obviously, what both of them are, since they've both been sitting for a while, so sell the first one with the contingency of looking at it through the cameras and everything like that? Or would it increase the price, because you have to do them at separate times?
Well, you have to dig them both up, that's the case, you know, the worst-case scenario. You have to find where they capped it off at, and then send the camera in, you know, and go from there and observe the condition of it.
And two different properties can be...
And at this point, they would like to buy them both, so they could order two houses at the same time.
They're ready to order the house.
Yeah.
I thought he said he could only get one.
He's able to get two.
Oh, he is, okay.
That's why we waited till this.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, 'cause I thought he had said it was just one, and then they'd have to wait another year.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay, sorry, continue.
Well, that's all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of 505 Offsted Street Parcel to HRC for the amount of $15,000, with the city providing $12,500 utility services.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. We'll move on to 7C, motion to approve the sale of 204 Offsted Street Parcel to the HRC for the amount of $10,000, with the city providing $10,100 worth of utilities, utility services. So we need a motion for that.
A motion to approve the sale of 204 Offsted Street Parcel to the HRC for the amount of $10,000, with the city providing $10,100 utility service.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We'll move on to number eight, Police Department. Updates, we'll start out with, and then we'll go from there.
So, for those who haven't met yet, my name is Jared Thompson. I've been police chief here, starting in my second week now. First week is kind of busy with getting all the paperwork, having meetings and all that, and then I've also been doing some interviews. But I want to bring up, you know, if you have complaints about kids driving, get the complaints to me, so I can address them. Last week, I was trying to cover as much time as I could by myself, you know, working days, nights, and then if we can get some more officers hired, it'll be easier to cover. So for the full-time position, after I did interviews and backgrounds, my name have for the council's Kyle Kleinschmidt. For the rate of $19.38 an hour. And then as a part-timer, he's a current deputy for Union County, his name is Isaac At the same rate of $19.38 an hour. Going forward, I'll have more stats, but I think kind of a busy week, so I didn't have time to pull anything. And there really wasn't much of a police department before I arrived, so.
How do you spell Isaac Sauter?
S-A-U-D-E-R.
So will he be on a regular routine, Isaac, or just as needed?
Kind of as needed.
As needed, okay.
To fill in what we need.
Super. How's things going, overall? Good?
Good so far. A lot of people have come and introduced themselves to me, but I appreciate, if you feel at home here. I haven't been flicked off yet, so that's an improvement over previous. Yeah, I've spent the last seven years up at SDSU, so definitely changed your pace, not having to chase college kids around.
Now you're chasing tweens, small children.
Yep.
They're faster.
With baseball bats, apparently, so it's gonna be... That's, looking forward to continuing to work, and hopefully we can get Kyle hired and trained and roll around the community, too.
How soon can you start, Kyle?
Tomorrow.
Are you currently employed, Kyle?
I currently work for the Beersburg Police Department part-time, and then I worked for Sanford and Sioux Falls part-time as well.
Okay.
But both of those are part-time positions, so I'd be fully invested in this job.
Great. Do you have any questions for the council?
No.
I guess I have a question, I'm not sure, I'm not up to date. Are you guys gonna be moving to town eventually? What's the status there?
For me, I had just moved to Sioux Falls, I'm kind of locked into a year lease, so once that lease is up, then I can find a home here in Elsister.
I currently live in Beersburg, my wife and I own a home in Beersburg. I do not have plans on moving to town. My wife has to drive to Sioux Falls for work every day, so it would be kind of a lot to ask her to move to Elsister for my job.
You're okay with driving your personal vehicle back and forth? You weren't planning on taking the pickup car home? I guess that was just something that we have allowed in the past, was the pickup going to Beersburg, but, you know, there was multiple discussions on that, so it'd be a good time to discuss what your thoughts are.
Yeah, 'cause from my angle, since he lives closer than I do, at least for the year, he'd be responding to calls in the middle of the night. So it makes it easier and it's faster response time if he does have his car and all his gear. City council is opposed to it, then we can do the personal car.
Sure.
What do you think?
I mean, you guys had to deal with it previously, so I don't know what the, what people said about it or what the pressing con was.
The cons were the speed, the speed coming by.
Coming too fast to town?
Coming too fast to town. That was probably the biggest issue I heard.
What I got, that was just kind of the.
That might have just been.
Those guys.
And then there was a few instances where our police car was at some places in Beersburg. But I do understand that you can be called as a help in Beersburg, too. So I don't know what the situation was. But I'd just be real careful with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I know it was at a restaurant one time and.
So if you have it, don't take it out to eat, don't go cruise around town with it, don't fly ninety-five unless there's something bad.
I ain't even heard about the one where it was at the restaurants.
I'm not making it up.
No, no, you're not. I've lived here for forty-seven odd years, but as, as a younger guy, I know everybody from Beersburg, clear down to the Ashford Iowa area. If you want to sneak something by, just call me, I'll tell you.
But, no, I'm, I'm okay with, like, I mean, like you said, if you need the response time, um, that was the reason that we did it before is that, you know, if someone needs to respond, that you're not driving your personal vehicle and then having to switch stuff over and all that. So that makes complete sense. Just, just know that there are lots of people all over everybody watching and they report back and so if, if anything's bad going, you'll know.
Then as we discussed previously, like if there starts to be a accumulation of a ton of miles, then we can back out on it.
Any other discussion on it? Well, with that being said, we'd have to have a motion to approve Kyle.
Should we do Kyle first or? Okay, well, because of the top one?
Go ahead.
Says part-time.
That's fine.
So I'll make a motion to approve hiring Kyle Kleinschmidt at the pay rate of nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour effective immediately.
How's that going?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed.
Thank you.
Both of you. I will also make a motion to approve hiring Isaac Sauter, a part-time officer at the pay rate of nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour. Hold on a second. Was it nineteen thirty or nineteen thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number nine, the one-time burn authorization. So a motion to approve one-time burn authorization, Elsister Golf Course, the Creek and the Wheaties.
So this is something we do every year. The fire department is aware when we do it and they won't do it until the conditions are favorable. But it, it allows us to clean out the excess debris from the creek.
A motion to approve one-time, one-time burn authorization, Elsister Golf Course, Creek Wheaties.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. Number ten, surplus property, ten A is motion to approve declaring the nineteen ninety-four Tri-X flatbed trailer, VIN number one eight two eight R-C-O-five-zero-four-four-five as a surplus and is no longer used for the surplus intended. Method of disposal would be auction, online auction using auction time.
So this is a trailer that we purchased on the way through. And since then, Lonnie has like painted it and put the brakes and come on it. But it's almost too heavy for our application. So if you'd like to get something different and you'd like to sell this one and then use the proceeds from that to get on turnip.
Thank you.
So of course, I have no idea what it's going to bring, what it's worth. It's just if you want to put a bare minimum on it or we just sell it and go with it. I'm assuming Lonnie has talked like he would like to reinvest in a trailer that we could use for our flat face roller, different things that would be more, it'd just be more handier than this, this trailer.
Do, so we know what, an approximate price? And would you go into the auction saying?
No, you just start it out and let it work its way out.
Dale, here's what I'm agreeing about three. But I don't know that, that that's kind of what we've got.
So if there's any other discussion on it, otherwise we need a motion on selling it or if you would not like to sell it, we can table it.
I feel like it's important for you to know how much it was purchased for and make sure since you can look into it, that it is being priced higher than what it was purchased for since you put time into it and paid into it.
So we bought it from the surplus from the state at eleven hundred dollars.
Okay, so it would be more than. Then I guess making.
Plus the tires on it, too, yeah.
Yeah, we put tires.
Because it's only getting three grand, but we put more into it than that. I don't think that would care price. Unless it has depreciated, but with putting paint and brakes on it, should have.
Definitely.
So as long as you feel comfortable.
I think it's, I think it's got to bring a minimum of three thousand. So we could put a minimum on it, of course, if you'd like.
Just to double check, can't make sure that somebody else is aware of how much everything is going to.
So would you like to have a minimum of three thousand on it?
I don't want to put the number on it because I don't know. I think there should be a value.
Sure.
As long as you're aware of it.
Yep.
Or somebody knows something more than I do about how much trailers were.
Sure.
Just so we don't go for five bucks.
Because of the doubt of the buyer.
Just so that we're gaining on it instead of losing.
That's fine.
I'll make a, a motion to approve declaring the nineteen ninety-four Tri-X flatbed trailer, VIN one eight two eight R-C-O-five oh four four five as surplus and is no longer used for the purpose intended, method of disposal, online auction using auction time, setting a minimum of three thousand. Could we do that? If it doesn't sell, we could always redo it. How's that any good?
Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Who seconded that?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
You tried to sneak in.
Number eleven, Premier Bank account signers.
So this motion, I couldn't fill in what it was because I wasn't going to be sure who was our officers, but currently we have. I don't think we'll need to remove anybody, but we will need to add Cindy. So when you read that motion, you will have to identify all of the signers. And so the signers will be myself and Abigail, Lucas, Darla and Cindy.
So a motion to keep Pat, Abigail, Lucas, adding Darla.
The bank is kind of going to be about how they want it worded. So I think what I would say is a motion to remove all current signers and then add the five of us.
I will then motion to remove Pat, Abigail, Lucas, Darla and Cindy from all Cindy bank accounts at Premier Bank and add Pat, Abigail, Lucas, Darla and Cindy as signers on all Cindy accounts at Premier Bank.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Number twelve, old Elsister Hudson High School building, city ownership.
So this came up, it's something that we had talked about maybe about six months ago. And it came up because I had a door repaired over the winter. The handicapped door button broke, I would imagine because it was covered in snow. And then something was going wrong with the closer. And so I asked the industrial board if they would be considered splitting this bill with us, which they said they would. But the question was brought up again, is the city interested in taking ownership of this building? And I guess my recommendation would be to make the decision after we know what's happening with the whole portion of the school. Because I, I have not heard from the school and if it's bids out, if they received any bids for demoing it. I have not heard anything from the city, so. That's up to you guys, how you feel about it.
I'm going to step in here, not feeling the best, I got a headache coming on. So I'm going to step out. Darla's going to finish out the meeting, so excuse me for stepping out, but I got a headache coming on, like a migraine, so. Sorry about that, but I gotta, I gotta step out. You want me to sign this before you leave? Thank you.
In that case, that's good.
You need to raise your hand.
I know, I forgot.
Thank you.
I would say we should maybe table it until we know more.
Okay.
When you guys say that, until we know more.
Yeah, I don't know what they have about the building anymore.
Because overall, see, the school owns this building, correct? All of it, or the industrial board does?
Nope. We, we own it together. So the school owns basically the two-story part. And the single-story part, which is this section, is owned by the industrial board. The trouble is until something happens with the older part of the building, we can't separate utility. And so what we do is at the end of the year, we ask the school what their utility bills were and then we kind of estimate what our usage is, what their usage is, and then the city and industrial board supplement the school for, we pay a quarter of the utility and industrial place a quarter and the school pays half. The, last I heard, which was around January, they hired an engineering firm to evaluate and put together the bid spec to demolish the two-story part of the building. And there are some people in the community that don't want to see the school go down and they would like to see if it could be turned into a apartments. But that would require a lot of money and I'm not sure where that's going to come from.
Is it unstable or is it?
No, it's actually in really good shape. The bones of it are really good. But it's just bad when a building isn't used, then it deteriorates a lot faster. Now, the gym is used for pickleball. I mean, that's a huge thing. And so the pickleball players do come in the front entrance and they go have access to the gym and they're here five, six days a week for pickleball. But the, like, the two-story part, nothing upstairs is being used. I do worry it is a little bit of a hazard if our youngsters are, want to explore, they may. The plan is to separate the building and to tear it down and then the industrial board would just own this part right here. And, you know, the thrift store is across from us. And we have had a store in the next classroom down. When there's not a store there, the thrift store, the Christmas store there. The VFW and Legion share a room at the far end of the hall for their meetings. So that's what we have so far.
Hasn't anybody done a feasibility study on converting to apartments and nobody was interested or, I don't know where was anything I could ever.
We are in the process of doing a housing study. I don't know that it's going to address this particular building. But we did, before we got to this point, the school invited some engineering firms or developers down to Sioux Falls and they brought a crew of like eight or ten people, like engineers, construction people, architect people. And they cleared all the floors and looked at it.
And as for this part, I mean, it's still old and I know there's some roof issues and there's also some brick issues possibly. So it's just something we're really going to have to look at.
That's all. I don't know.
So we'll save, we'll table twelve, Joe.
And maybe if we could get someone from the school that might be able to give us an update on what they're, because yeah, no, like you said, the last thing we heard from school to school is that they're looking to tear that completely down or give bids for us. So see if they have a timeline because they thought that by the end of the summer that it would be down originally when they talked about. We'll see what they're looking at.
Um, we'll go on to number thirteen. When the community center was opened, the golf course wanted to have their golf league have a group that met with us. And when the clubhouse was built, we met last April and now we met just this last week. It was a very good meeting. We had, everyone was there except one of the men from the men's league. We discussed a few things about starting the sign-in again when, part of our issue is behaviors on the golf course, point blank. Turn around on golf carts, not paying. I did some checking with other golf courses before I went to this meeting and I talked to our insurance as a city part. And bottom line is you need to be sixteen to drive a golf cart, sixteen. So you can see the rules that I kind of tried to follow. So we are now going to start where they have to sign in again and put the time that they go on to the golf course. Yeah, it might be, it's, sometimes you feel like it's pointless, some maybe won't do it, but every town does do it. And then we do have a little accountability to who's on the golf course and how long. If they're a member, no, it's not such a big deal, they paid their membership. But you do get some out-of-town people that might try to golf a lot of, a lot of holes and paid for not. So we'll give a look, they were all in favor of that. I gave them the, the rules I kind of came up with and they said, go for them. We've never really had any rules. So you can kind of see them. And we did put on there that if there's privileges are lost, there will be no refunds given because that seems to be when behaviors happen, they, they want their money back. It's like, well, sorry, that's part of the privilege. And it's like, well, sorry, that's part of the privilege. So the cart rules, cart rules are pretty rigid. And a lot of towns, Canton's are 18, had to be 18, and it was because of behaviors, behaviors on the golf cart. So we just tried to put the general rules down, so we're going to put that, all members are getting, be given a copy on the cart. We're gonna post one. And then the other thing we talked about was, and I just had it happen the Friday night before the meeting. We were out to dinner with someone and they said to us, well, how do you even know where to go pay for your golf? So we're going to get a sign made that will bring them in from the west. And they're gonna make it, we're not gonna do it at the bar, because there's too much at the bar already. So they'll sign in on a stand right next to the door. And I talked to Haywarden's Golf Course, and they said, on hole two, they put a box with scorecards, and they thought it wouldn't work. But if people come golfing at seven o'clock and the clubhouse isn't open, they said we were shocked, people paid, paid. So we're gonna mark that somewhere where, and Dave Larson was going to make sure that box was put up. Used to be up in the old clubhouse, we're gonna bring it now out on this one. So.
I remember, yeah.
Yeah, so, and if that things went well, they would like to meet the end of June again, just to review things. So I think that's a good thing, it's positive, so.
Can I ask for verification on that one?
Um, where was it?
The one with 16, dealing with 16-year-olds. Cart rules.
Number two.
Number two? Oh, so it says that, is it adult age 21 or older? Is it? On the front supervising the minor on the cart. Okay. And Dave really liked the one where all of our carts that are rented are only made for two people. Right. And I got that rule from other golf courses. And I talked to the Beersford guy at his golf course, and he said he need to be firm on these rules, and they work. So that's. I was so, because some golf carts have, like, if you're on your own, they have a, the front and back seat, that's what on the front, okay. But the biggest thing is, we're liable as a city insurance on renting. Right. If you're on your own, it's your own, it's not our responsibility. So, am I right, that's how?
Yep, and any rented cart that the city owns is only gonna have just two seats.
Yes, that's what they said, yep, that's all it has.
And who's enforcing?
That is one of our big issues this year. But Landon and Kelsey, the who are the managers, they're going to try to really watch this more. And then the groundskeepers are gonna try to, and like we told them, call the police. If you have trouble, call them, you know. So they said, no, they thought if they knew when they checked in and that they're out there, it's gonna be a little bit easier to keep tabs of.
Like these rules, they'll have to go along with when they sign for their membership.
Yep, they were all gonna get one.
May I be recognized? You may want to consider putting cameras, like wildlife cameras maybe, out toward the back of the golf course? Just to, just to kind of monitor? Because, you know, as far, the farther they get away from the clubhouse.
They might try.
The more shenanigans could be.
One of the concerns that the people run forward is, they said you don't want kids to golf. We said, no, that's not what it was intended at all. Young kids can go out and golf, but they can walk. Because if they're in golf league, they walk. And so, I mean, if you guys, if there's something on here you don't like, they approved it at the meeting and they were taking it to golf with golf leagues.
Or they can find a parent that is over 21 that can go golfing with them.
Yep.
Spend time with the kids.
Yep. So that's, that's just so you're aware of that.
That's good, thank you.
Next, we go to finance officer updates.
What about the building signage?
That was that, oh.
That's these.
Oh, you didn't talk about that, I was thinking it was a sign for the golf course, that was a whole.
So one of the comments that people had made at the community center is that we should have some sort of signage near Sixth Street. I have extra, Abigail.
Oh, you do, okay.
So we met with Fast Signs, who makes a lot of our signs. And one discussion was to put some sign, a sign on the watershed, that little white building that's at the end of the driveway there. That is an option. We met with some members of our community center, and they recommended that we make it a freestanding sign and not attach it to the watershed that's out there. And that watershed is what you see here, this is the watershed. And the images that you have on here kind of represent what possible options might look like. And we just asked the representative for Fast Signs, what are some options that we could do? And he said, do you want a lit sign or a non-lit sign? Do you want it to have different panels? So that you could, like, when golf season is done, we could remove that panel and slide something else in. And that's what this sign would represent. And we also said, well, what would it cost if we wanted to have something programmable? So that if something was going on, or we could promote daily specials or whatever, so that's what this sign would represent. Lucas had wanted us to bring this to the council to get your opinion. Would you rather focus getting some nice signs at the entrance of the facility? Or would you rather get a sign that doesn't have so much bells and whistles, but just basically a sign? And then get another sign somewhere else, like on Highway 11 as you're coming into town along the golf course area? So that's just kind of some thoughts there. And what I can do is meet with this representative, you guys can think about this. And I can meet with the representative or Landon and Kelsey can, and they can have a mock-up made. So you can visualize what this might look like. But when we did meet with Fast Signs, he actually presented us some examples of signs they had made in other places. And they really do look nice, so.
So I'll say my thoughts here. So I, my background is, I worked for a sign company for seven years, had my own graphics and sign company for a couple of years. So I know Fast Signs very well, they do great work with their stuff. So my thoughts on the signage for the clubhouse there is to go with, this would be, on your estimates here, it'd be option six, which is project one. Option two B. Whereas, these are just going, they would be metal signs, and then you can put lights on the outside of them. Compared to the other options here, the more expensive ones are lighted cabinets, where the light is coming from the background. And it's like what you see at gas stations and stuff like that, where the light's coming from the inside and it glows. That, those signs are great if you need to be found at nighttime. The golf course, the clubhouse, many times are not during the nighttime when people need to find it. So when it does get dark, simple lights on the front of it will be fine. Otherwise, you have a nice lighted sign cabinet that's lit up in the middle of the night for no reason, because nobody's going golfing or going out to eat in the middle of the night. So the front lights are, yeah, the number six there is just the lights on the front of it. It's a much cheaper option for getting large colorful signage out there. And then with the savings that we get on that, we can look into putting in something a little nicer on Highway 11 or somewhere nearby, so.
Would you recommend putting it on, mounting it on the watershed, or would you recommend a freestand?
I said, when I originally talked to him, I said, put it on the watershed, it's there, electricity's there. Otherwise, we have to dig up, find somewhere else to put it, put electricity to it, like this is already sitting there. It's a perfect size to put a four-by-eight sign on there, which you can see by there, in the back, their top one with the four-by-eight LED sign, but essentially be just a front lit one. And there's already little lights and electricity there, so it makes the install super simple. All you gotta do is basically screw something to the side of that building and it's.
So, yep, that watershed was ever tore down, which was a possibility. Could it go to a freestanding?
Yep, yeah, you just take the screws out. Yep, and the sign face should be fine, as long as nobody's running to it or anything. But yeah, the sign face will be fine, you can take the screws out, put some poles in the ground and screw it under those poles, it'll be good.
And another thing that golfers really, really want is more on a website. They don't want to have their own website, they think that the census with the city, it should be with the city. But I asked them point blank. And they really think we need to get it out there on a nice website promoting our building.
You talking just the golf or?
The whole thing, and then have the golf course part of it.
Yep.
Looking for those rules, I saw a lot of webpages. Rock Valleys was amazing, I mean.
I do think that's important, because it is owned by the city, and then we can have all the events on the city calendar. Looking at the website, it shows the city council meetings, but it doesn't show all the events that are being held there. So unless you like know to go to their Facebook page, not everybody has to just look.
And I get really confused when I, I'm a little savvy, but sometimes when I try to find stuff, because I tried, remember I talked to you? I tried to find the menu one day. Because I was at home, and I wanted to go pick up, and I couldn't find it. And I mean, I did find it, but it was, it was El Sister Golf Course, but there was nothing there. Kelsey up there said she knew somebody, we'll have to ask her.
Just say, like, do any of the waitresses know their way around computers a little better, every half the time?
I know, kids.
Because we have some great waitresses there, and there's bound to be a couple of them that are decent with social media that could maybe spice things up a little bit.
Well, we just had a wedding there that had fireworks, and if I could find the picture, it was amazing. It showed the bride and the groom on the deck and the fireworks in the back.
There's a lot of fireworks.
It was a, it was a very pretty picture that went to be promoted. So we need stuff in the event site, that's what's.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're not, that was just.
That's more information, yep.
All right, so any updates?
So now that we have more people on the council, I was gonna hand out the monthly spot checks. So if Kyle, Lucas and Darla, you guys still want to do January, February and March, I will update from April forward. And I'll fill in Kendra and Carrie. But basically what these spot checks are, is an opportunity for you to come in and you pick, you'll have a couple of months that you'll be responsible for, and once I get the bank statements, then you can come in and meet with me. And you randomly select some checks that you want to review, some deposits you want to review. It is appreciated by the auditors that we do this, because we don't have separation of duties in our office with it being just two. And so by you guys coming in and doing this, it satisfies that need, and the auditors are grateful for that. So I will look at the sheet for the next meeting. But for right now, if I do have January, February and March, so if you three want to do those, then I'll have an updated one for you guys next meeting.
So it's like a silly question, but when we come in, we randomly pick it, but then you're telling us what to do, does that kind of counter intuition of us? Are there any mistakes you mind with me?
No, I actually did one, and you just, you have the bank statement, and that's what you pick your stuff off of. So you'll take five?
Five checks.
Five checks, and then, and I just.
I don't tell you which ones to pick.
No, we, we choose everything ourselves.
And then you have, like, it's, the table's full of, you have bank statement, you have one check ledger, and then you have another backup check ledger, so it's, all the info's there. If you want to figure out how to do it on your own.
All you're doing is what an auditor would do, which would be a random sample. And then you verify that this particular check was written to this person and it paid for that dollar amount. And it shows that on the bank statement.
And I did have an instinct where I, we couldn't find something. And there's a spot on that paper, and you just.
Make a comment.
Make a comment. Okay, so the next, we'll go to finance office, number C. A motion to approve paying $81,410.40 to IPTWW Construction Services. Seacog, $15,000, administration services for the sewer fund.
So for those of you that aren't familiar, IPT is the company that was awarded the wastewater facility plant upgrade for industrial process technology. And they have been doing some work, and this is really administrative work right now, the $81,000. It's securing some site insurance and some other projects. It's really just administrative type stuff at this point. Seacog helped us obtain our financing, and so that is a bill for their services. These are all refunded to us as part of our grant. But anytime there is a check needing to be written that's greater than a thousand, I need council approval.
So we just need a motion.
Does this have to be the same construction company that was moving their trailer in over the weekend?
Yes.
They're in charge of it.
I'll motion to approve paying $81,410.40, IPTWW Construction Services. Seacog, $15,000 administrative services.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, number D, motion to approve paying Motorola Solutions for a mobile radio for the patrol car at $7,859.25, which will come out of the general fund. That is one thing that Jared wanted to correct, he didn't have that.
Actually, Austin ordered these last, not you.
You didn't say Austin. Austin came in and requested these, right?
Yes, he ordered these last October, and then they just came in.
Oh, okay, so. So that's already been in the. How do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve paying Motorola Solutions mobile radio for patrol car, $7,859.25 out of the general fund.
Second that.
All in favor?
Actually, yes, for discussion.
Oh, discussion, all right. Any discussion about that? Okay, so all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, the next one is, every year, just you guys understand this, every year we take two golf carts that are old. two golf carts that are old and they trade them for two. And it's, it's always right around the five thousand dollar mark. And then we have the second penny tax account, and that's where it comes up, correct?
Correct.
So, do we have the money to tell them?
Yes.
Yeah. In fact, they've already, they have them in order too.
I, they're here.
Yeah.
They were in the line.
Yeah. So, we just need a motion.
I'll motion to approve paying V and E golf carts, five thousand dollars for two golf carts of trade, taken out of the second penny count. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is the motion to approve paying ADG one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one one dollars and twenty-three cents for the door repair that we talked about earlier out front this winter. And we're splitting it with industrial board out of the general fund.
Split fifty-fifty? Yes, and I should tell you that the total bill was eleven, twenty-one, twenty-three, and industrial board will pay us five hundred and some change.
I'll motion to approve paying ADG one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-three cents for the door repair, split with the industrial board, coming out of the general fund.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? If not, all, I'll say, all approve?
All in favor?
All in favor. I lost the word, aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, motion carried. The next one is, you wanna explain that one?
Sure. Every year, the South Dakota Municipal League puts on training, they have an HR school, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the finance officer school, no, I'm sorry, HR is Wednesday, Thursday, and then FO school is Thursday, Friday. And the last couple of years, I haven't been able to attend, because we've been busy with the community center, but I would like to request that both Abigail and I attend. I have asked Cindy, she can man our office for those days while we are gone. And the fee, because we are members, I, the fee is very minimal for us to attend, and it's just mileage and hotel stay, but we stay together, so. And it is a lot of the training, we pick topics. If you go to SDML.com, they have the agenda up, but they have topics that affect each of those areas, and they have workshops all throughout the days.
And just so you guys know, I went to Bateson, is it in summer this year?
Yes.
June, oh, no.
July, it's usually July.
In July, and I went last year to the meeting for us, and it was so informative. I learned so much there, so I can only imagine, SD and F O, they do it.
Yeah.
Our SDML.
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve attending SDML HR School, FO School, June sixth through ninth, twenty twenty-three, in Pier Four, Abigail and Pat.
Is that coming out of the general fund then?
It comes out of, it does come out of general fund, yes. It comes out of my budget.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is, every year we have the malt beverage licenses that we have to pay. So, it goes to the Elsister Quick Stop, Total Stop, Elsister Municipal Golf Course, and this will approve for twenty, two thousand, twenty-three, twenty-four malt beverage license and allow Mayor Dreeson to sign alcohol purchase agreements.
So, there's an application that needs to be completed by the particular vendor, which in this case is the golf course and Quick Stop, and then this gets sent into the state. We also have an operating agreement that each of the businesses sign, which states what is expected of the license holder, letting them know that for malt beverage, we do charge a five percent markup, and when that is due, how that is calculated, and it's just the terms of holding the license, so.
And to be clear, this is a beer license, right?
Malt beverage is, yep, beer line.
Not liquor license.
The alcohol licenses are renewed at the end of the year, their, their calendar. Malt beverage is July one to June thirty.
I will motion to approve twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four malt beverage license and allow Mayor Dreeson to sign alcohol purchase agreement. I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you wanna go ahead and tell us?
So, just so you guys all know, the dumpsters will be arriving on May fifth, that's your time for spring cleanup. Anything that doesn't fit in your can at the end of the driveway can now go in those dumpsters. We do not allow dumpster diving. Graduation is the thirteenth, Mother's Day, we have a brunch at the community center, and I put a flyer in your packet so that you know what the menu is. Next city council meeting is the fifteenth, the last day of school is March eighteen. The dumpsters will be here through Sunday, the twenty-first of May. So, there are three weekends that they are available for your use. City hall will be closed on Monday, the twenty-ninth, and then our pool opens on June one.
Then we have full lifeguards today, pretty much.
They're three that still need to complete their certifications, but Peyton said that they're signed up for classes.
They just set up that, and I'm living in schools now, now?
I don't know what their plan is, but she did say that we should plan on them.
Okay.
So, once they have their certifications, we can officially...
I just had one other announcement, I was just making sure I was allowed to talk about it. But the, I know there's a lot of concern over the clubhouse, the gorilla stuff, over budget issues last year. Like was stated earlier, we have put in a lot of work to be able to turn that around, and I would like to note that it has made money in the month of April. We went from losing money on a regular basis to, we have turned it around and gotten things on the right track, where it's not only breaking even, but it's making money. So, I just wanna applaud those here, council officers and stuff that, and our co-managers down at the clubhouse for, you know, really digging deep into it and making this thing work. So, just wanted to leave on that positive note.
Okay, do we need any executive session, anybody? Well, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn council?
I'll make the motion, I'll be adjourned.
You guys want to get out of here? I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, the meeting is adjourned at eight, nine, or eight?
Eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen. Thank you.